Thank you for joining us for this North Metro TV Local Decision Candidate Debate. Today with us here are the candidates in Blaine City Council Ward 1. We have Dick Swanson, the incumbent, and challenger John Wilcox. Thank you both for being here. We appreciate your time tonight. We're going to start today with opening statements. After that, we'll go into a question and answer period. Then the candidates, if they choose, will have an opportunity to ask their opponent one question. We'll conclude tonight with closing statements. Dick, you'll be first with the opening statement, and you have one minute.
Okay. I'm Dick Swanson. I'm the current city councilman for Ward 1. I've been on the council for six terms. I'm running for my seventh. I moved to Blaine in 1983, which was quite a bit different city than it is today. The nice thing about the city of Blaine is it's continually changing. Every year, it's a new city. I may have 20 years on the council, but it's not 20 years of repeating the same activity. It's 20 years of different activities every year. I have a BA from Mankato State. I have a Masters of Public Administration in Local Government from Kent State University. And I retired from Mindot as Director of Finance. I'd also served as Director of Central Purchasing for Mindot and Director of Administration for the Aeronautics Department when there wasn't an Aeronautics Department. And like I say, I've lived in Blaine since 1983, and I'm married.
Thank you for your opening statement this evening. John, your opportunity now for your opening statement.
Hi, John Wilcox. We built our home in Blaine in 1997. I am a 20-year employee for the city of Minneapolis. My wife Melissa and I have two children, Allison, who is a freshman at Spring Lake Park High School, and our son Austin, who is in 7th grade at Spring Lake Park at Westwood. I am really excited. This has been a great challenge for me. I've always been active in the community, a lot of community things that I've taken part in, and I just love my city, and it's something that I always wanted to do. So this was my chance to give it a shot.
Thank you for your opening statement. We're going to move on to question and answer segment. We'll be changing the order of who's answering first and second as we go throughout. The first question that we're going to have tonight, John Wilcox, you'll be first to answer this question. Talking about development, knowing that you cannot always pick and choose the development that comes your way, Blaine residents have been asking for an upscale grocery store for quite some time. What can you do as a member of the city council to make that a reality? John, you're first.
Well, we have an EDA director that kind of, they're kind of in charge in the development, and they bring, you know, you have to have faith in the staff that you have onboard, and they bring forth through the council, you know, their ideas. And any business, I believe, is an asset to Blaine, whether it be, you name it, any business, I think, we can always find a home for it in Blaine.
Thank you for your answer. Dick, same question to you now. Knowing that you cannot always pick and choose the development that comes your way, Blaine residents have been asking for an upscale grocery option for some time. What can you do as a member of the city council to make that a reality?
One thing that we can do is we can have our EDA director and ourselves have contact with the management of the operations. I've had the actual relocation manager for Lund's out here. At one point, he was a relative of my wife. He's still a relative of my wife, but he's no longer the redevelopment manager. Problem at that point is we didn't have the rooftops. We're in continuing negotiation with Hy-Vee, trying to get them to come to the city. The big problem Hy-Vee has is where the rooftops that they want, there's no land. Where we have land, there aren't the rooftops they want. So what we're in the process of trying to do is convince them that the rooftops are coming and that they're better off making a decision now, maybe a little bit earlier, and get there while the land is still there, then be cut out of the land like they are in the areas of the city they want to be. And Blaine, even though it seems like a lot of land, really doesn't have that much land for large-scale development companies. It's hard to find an area near rooftops that's 10, 14, 18 acres, which is the kind of acreage that the big, high-end developments want.
Thank you both for your answers. As I said, you'll both always be offered rebuttal time. It's 15 seconds if you choose to use it. Would anyone like it after the first question? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next question. Dick Swanson, you'll be first on this question. Talking about the city budget, how do you prioritize when it comes to the city budget? If you had to cut, where would you look first? If there were additional funds, where would you look first to direct those funds? How do you prioritize items in the city budget?
Okay. The first thing that I prioritize is why the city exists. We exist to provide public safety, police, fire, maintain the roads, snow plowing, and then to maintain the infrastructure. Maintaining the infrastructure means we're maintaining the water systems, the water plants. We're maintaining the sewer lines, the water lines, and this is all major things. On the current council, we've set up what's called the pavement management program, where we take $250,000 a year off the top of the budget and just dedicate it to road reconstruction of various kinds. Then, after we go through those areas, then we have to look at what are the real new needs of the population. This last year, we looked at traffic control. We're adding two new policemen strictly into the traffic control area for neighborhoods. We had enough money this year, we could do that. So that was an area that the city's needed for a long time. A couple of years ago, we recognized that there was at least a perception of a crime issue around the western edge of the city. We created, myself and Councilman Herbs urging, we created a new police substation at Northtown. If you go into Northtown today, you can see that substation there. And that freed up the people who man the current substation that takes care of the western part of the city, to concentrate on that part of the city and not to worry about the crime in the commercial area around Northtown.
Thank you for your answer. Same question now to you, John Wilcox. How do you prioritize when it comes to the city budget? If you had to cut, where would you look first? If you needed to allocate additional funds, where would you direct those dollars?
It's all about services for the residents. As a city leader, you're responsible to provide for the residents that hire you to do so. Like Dick had said, public safety, roads, safe water, those are all vital to a community. We provide a service to the residents. In return, you know, their taxes reflect the services they get. We have to, you know, continue to keep that in mind, that you have to be responsible for the financial decisions that affect the residents. But I can tell you, most residents, public safety is huge. They want to be safe. A lot of things that the residents take for granted, as far, you know, water, water, a lot of folks take for granted. We had the issues in Flint, Michigan. That's very important nowadays. The services we provide to the residents, they should continue to expect those, so...
Thank you for your answer. Would anyone like rebuttal time after that? Okay. We'll move on to the next question. Let's talk specifically about Ward 1, your ward. John, what is something you would like to accomplish for your ward?
We have the two sites. We have the Rainbow Site, and we also have the Kmart site. We'd like to see some development in those areas. The dynamics of Ward 1, there's kind of two sides. There's the younger side and the older side, you know, just the older neighborhoods. And everything, like Dick said, I agree with him, the city changes constantly. There's always new families moving in. Ward 1 has so much to offer. We have great parks. I think our roads are in decent shape. I am very impressed with our public safety. Ward 1 is the oldest ward in the city of Blaine, and, well, it's my home, so I'm biased, but it's a great part of Blaine.
Thank you for your answer. Dick, same question to you. What is something that you would like to accomplish for your ward?
Well, there's a couple of things. First of all, as mentioned, the whole Kmart site is a major need to get it developed properly. And it's not just the Kmart site. The city of Blaine, there was a little collapsing gas station on University. The city bought that up and cleaned it up. There was a music store there that went out of business. The city bought that up, cleaned it up. There was Frank's Nursery there. A lot of people remember that. The city owns that as part of our economic redevelopment. So what happens in the Kmart site, main site, impacts us because we have a vast amount of acreage around that site. Now, we've looked at some people, but the hotel-type people don't seem to think it's a good location, and I would tend to agree with them. It's a little bit off the beaten path where hotels would want to be, even though it's the right size. The developer who owns Kmart so far hasn't been overly interested in talking to us. We're afraid he's going to be more interested in just putting lipstick on the building and breaking it down into smaller retail stores. If that happens, that's going to hurt the old Rainbow Site because the two sites tend to go together. Nobody was really interested in looking at the Rainbow Site until they know what's happening at the Kmart site. That's an area we're working on. What I personally would like to see in there to some extent, and we probably have to put some EDA money into it. But if you go down to Bloomington and Richfield, you see the senior housing over 55 market rate, not subsidized, but market rate apartment complex. I think that'd be a great place to put some of that kind of thing. It fits the neighborhood.
Thank you. Anyone need rebuttal time after that? Does not appear so. Let's move on then. Let's talk about the community center. Dick, you'll be first on this question. Is now the right time for a community center in Blaine? And do you support the referendum that'll be on the ballot this fall?
Personally, I think this is, if it's going to happen, it has to happen at this point. 10 years, 12 years ago, we tried to pass a referendum. At that point, the council was the point person on it, and the reaction against the community center was as much a reaction against the council trying to push it down people's throats as the community center. Personally, I think we need the community center. The council has agreed to stay out of the actual activity, and I'm not trying to direct people either way, but I think if it's going to happen, it's going to have to pass this time. If it doesn't pass this time, it'll be another 15, 20 years before anybody brings it up again. And at that point, there probably won't be the land, and it'd be extremely expensive compared to today.
Thank you for your answer. John, same question to you now. Is now the right time for a community center in the city of Blaine? And do you support the referendum that'll be on the ballot this fall?
I'm leaving it up to the voters. Ultimately, it's their choice. They get to decide. Community centers bring an awful lot to a city. I'm more concerned about redoing the senior center. I think the seniors play a vital role in our community. I guess I'm a little disappointed on the verbiage that on the ballot, it states that, you know, one, both, or, either/or. I think it's two separate views that should be voted on separately. Ultimately, it's up to the voters, the everyday voters, to decide if that's something that will be an asset to their city.
Thank you. Rebuttal time, anyone? Let's talk about roads, specifically Highway 65. John, you're first on this question. How would you like to see congestion on Highway 65 addressed in the next couple of years?
I take Highway 65 every day, and I understand people's frustrations with the road. I actually like what they did towards Main Street and Highway 65 at the overpass. It really needs to be addressed. It's a major artery through our city that it has unbelievable amounts of traffic on there. So the city does have to take a hard look and see what sorts of improvements we can make on Highway 65 to alleviate the traffic congestion. But like I said, I do like what they did with the overpass on Main Street there. So all options have to be on the table as far as what we can do to make things better for the folks that drive it.
Thank you for your answer. Dick, same question to you. How would you like to see congestion along Highway 65 addressed in the next few years?
Well, in the perfect world, we'd have enough money to put additional lanes in and some overpasses. That world does not exist. Mindot does not have the money to work on that road, and it is a state highway. It's not a city or a county street. And with the current funding for Mindot, in two or three years, they're going to only be doing maintenance work. They're not going to be doing any new construction work. What we can do, and what I've tried to work with this state and our engineers working in the state, is to change the timing on the lights. Right now, Mindot has 65 set up, so its sole purpose is to drive traffic through the city of Blaine. If we could get the lights changed, at least even during the non-rush hour period, so traffic could actually move through the city and more effectively up and down 65, it would help traffic. It wouldn't be a solution. It's a Band-Aid. But unfortunately, what I know about transportation funding, a Band-Aid is probably all we're going to get for the next 20 years.
Thank you for your answer. Rebuttal time, anyone? Okay. Let's talk about public safety next. Dick, you'll be first on this question. It's clear both nationally and locally that there's high tension between segments of the law enforcement community and minority communities. With Blaine's growing diversity, how will you work to create an environment in the city to address and talk about these issues?
At this point, luckily, and it's partially a good training and the efforts of our chief, we have not had those kind of problems. We have some drug issues, and we had some beginning of crime in the western part of the city, which, like I say, creating the substation at Northtown, we've taken care of some of it. The first thing we can do to make certain that we don't have that kind of things happen is do good hiring. Blaine has an extremely tight process to review candidates. In fact, we've had a couple times where the class that's come through, we haven't hired anybody out of it, and we've just left the positions vacant. You know, you could argue that, well, that means you're not giving the people safety. But you want the wrong kind of person out there with a high-powered car and a gun, or you're safer not having that person on the street. So there's been talk, and we may reach the point where a citizens' police advisory committee might be worthwhile. I don't think we've reached it yet. That's part of watching how the city grows and how things develop. That would be, if we do create that, it's going to be very interesting how you set the powers of it, how you decide who's going to be on it, so you don't have it tilted one way or the other. And it's going to have to have everything very well-defined if you create that kind of environment, or you're asking for nothing but trouble.
Thank you for your answer. John, same question to you. It's clear both nationally and locally that there is high tension between segments of the law enforcement community and minority communities. And with Blaine's growing diversity, how will you work as a council member to create an environment to address these issues in your city?
I think Blaine's doing a great job at it. They're doing a lot of community outreach. They're going to the schools. They're talking to the kids. That's a wonderful thing because it teaches kids young, you know, about public safety, just awareness. The many programs, Blaine Safety Camp, a lot of things that the public safety has, they're wonderful programs. We have to give public safety the financial means and the resources for them to do the job that they need to do, and that's protect our city. That's their sole job, and that's what the residents expect.
Thank you. Anyone want rebuttal time after that? I'm going to keep asking. Let's move on to a question about the growth in the city of Blaine. John, you'll be first on this question. Blaine is projected to grow to a city of more than 80,000 people, and it's well on its way. What are important steps for the city council to take in managing that growth? John?
Well, that's great news. That's great news for anybody that wants, you know, in a leadership role with the city of Blaine. That just tells you that our city is going in a wonderful direction. Basically, we have to have the needs of the residents first. We have to do what they want to do. They're the ones that put us in a position to make decisions for them. The growth of Blaine, I've seen it grow since we've built in 97. It's great to see the influx of new families. You know, that, like I said, I'll repeat myself, but that's wonderful news that we're growing. That means we're doing something right, and we should continue to do that.
Thank you for your answer. Dick, same question to you now. Blaine is projected to grow to a city of more than 80,000 people. What are important steps for the city council to take in managing that growth?
Okay. Actually, we're projected to be between 85 and 90,000. And a good number of steps have already been taken. The area where most of the growth is going to take place is in the northeast quadrant. And about 10 years ago, we had a major neighborhood group looking at how they wanted that quadrant to develop, and it's pretty much developing according to the plans. There are some hiccups in the plans. Traffic is the big one, how to develop Main Street properly. If you've been driving up Main Street east of Lexington, you've seen all the disruption on Main Street. That's because right now, we're pushing the sewer and water under Main Street, which is going to open up 800 acres of new housing, commercial, hopefully some light industrial. In the last four years, we've added $152 million worth of new light industrial and some commercial, but primarily light industrial. The big problem that the city has right now is finding good parcels to have our light industrial. I'm working with a trucking company right now that's currently in Blaine, and they're looking for a parcel of 15 acres to relocate on. You'd think that would be easy. It boils down to there's only four or five parcels, and when you eliminate price and some other things, it gets really complicated. And they're a good company. We really want to keep them in Blaine. But the problem is to find parcels big enough where the neighborhood would accept them.
Thank you for your answer. Rebuttal time, anyone? Okay. Just a couple more questions from me. Let's talk about road safety. Dick, you'll be first on this question. The death of Danny Aguilar in May rekindled the debate in Blaine regarding the safety of neighborhood streets. What can be done to make streets in Blaine safe for residents and keep them efficient and accessible for drivers?
This isn't just an issue for Blaine. This is an issue for at least the seven-county metropolitan area, if not the whole state and the whole country. A lot of it is distracted drivers. You know, there's three things to go into traffic safety: engineering, education, and enforcement. Well, we try to do the best engineering we can. We've got some places where the engineering didn't come out exactly the way we hoped. It's hard to go back and change engineering. The education, we're looking at what the city can do at education, which is probably going to take some more cost, but probably going into the high schools to get some better education going out at that level. Because quite frankly, you can track where the traffic issue is concerned as to when the children turn from being children to being drivers. And you can almost do a graph and figure out exactly where the next group of traffic, big traffic issues are going to occur. So if we can get better education in junior high and senior high, and the last is enforcement. And in a perfect world, that club wouldn't be needed, but we don't live in a perfect world. And the council just created the traffic unit, adding two new positions. That will be neighborhood traffic. They will not be on 35. They will not be, except marginally, on 65. They're going to be in the neighborhoods where it's needed. And we don't know if two positions were the right number. It may be that two's a drop in the bucket. Over the years, we may have to build up to five or six. We hope to keep that unit functioning into the neighborhood scream "stop." And at that point, hopefully, we've brought manners back into traffic.
Thank you for your answer. John, same question to you now. The death of Danny Aguilar in May rekindled the debate in Blaine about the safety of neighborhood streets. What can be done to make streets in Blaine safe for residents and keep them accessible and efficient for drivers?
I agree with Dick. Education is a key. We should get into the high schools, and, you know, they go through their driving course. We can't drive for them. And kudos to Blaine for the hiring of the two officers that are going to patrol the neighborhoods. Having an autistic son, traffic has always been an issue for me. It's something that you always have your eyes on. You know, 90% of the people that speed in the neighborhoods actually probably live there. You know, you can't stop drunk drivers. You can't, there's so much you can't do. Education and just awareness, just to try to, you know, just try to bring awareness to the fact that this is our neighborhood, this is our home. Respect where we live.
Thank you. Last question from me tonight at this point. John, you'll be first at this question. This is a question that we're asking to every single person that comes in and sits down. It's the only question everybody's hearing from me this year, and it deals with unity. Across our country, across America, we're seeing deep divisions between races, ages, religions, socioeconomic classes, and political parties. How will you work to foster a spirit of unity, both at City Hall and right in your own neighborhood? John, here first.
At City Hall, we are hired to do a job. It's not our personal agenda. It's the agenda of those that hire us to be there. So if you put that in mind, you know, a leader is there to lead and to listen. So that's our main job. And it starts at home. Respect at home. Respect when you're out and about in the city of Blaine. But as a leader, we are there to serve our neighbors.
Thank you for your answer. Dick, same question to you now. How will you work to foster a spirit of unity, both at City Hall and in your own neighborhood?
Well, in City Hall, the big thing, it takes four votes to pass anything. And normally, most of our decisions are 7-0. Once in a while, a 6-1 if somebody has a major philosophical problem with what's happening. And I've been to one at times. I think everybody in the council has been to one at times. But it hasn't been partisan or personal. It's been a philosophical issue that that person has with what, or how the city is going on. And that's fine, as long as you can keep talking and don't have partisan politics getting at the city level, which so far it hasn't. That's good. I think on the neighborhood and the community, I saw a thing on Facebook the other day that we can't let the presidential election poison us. When the election is over, Hillary and Trump are both going to be wealthy. They're both going to have their airplanes. They both can fly away. The rest of us live where we live, and we have to make our communities the best we can, working with our neighbors.
Thank you for your answer. Thank you both for the answers to all the questions that I posed to you today. Now comes the time in the debate where, if you choose, you have the opportunity to ask your opponent one question. Dick, you have the first opportunity to ask a question to John if you choose.
I'll pass at this point.
Thank you. John, you have an opportunity, if you choose, to ask a question to Dick.
No, I think I'm good.
Okay. Well, we're going to move right into closing statements then. Dick, you'll be first with your closing statement tonight. You have one minute for your closing statement.
Okay. I've been the city councilman for a long time. I've seen Blaine grow in a lot of different directions, and I have to believe that I've had a major part in some of that growth. In traffic, there's a little segment on Highway 35 that wouldn't exist without me. When you come off of Lake Drive, there's a little segment of line, lane, that's Third Lane between Lake Drive and Highway 10. When you come off of the truck area over by John's house and go on to that, that little segment of road, that road wouldn't exist except for what I have done with the 35W Coalition and getting money from the federal government to fund it, not the state. And that's a little thing I've done, but it's something I'm very proud of, and I've done a lot of that kind of thing. The dog park wouldn't exist if I hadn't spent the last five years working hard to make that happen, working with the park people, working with the park commission, working with fellow councilmen, even going out with the park staff and looking at locations and helping them eliminate or select. So I would just ask, if you like the city of Blaine, consider returning me.
Thank you for your closing statement. John, your opportunity for your closing statement.
Local politics is a great way for an everyday resident to help shape the city that they call home. I just love my city. I'm not running for any political platform or to move up the chair. I'm moving because city politics to me is something that really matters. We've made our home here for 17 years, and we've been involved in many aspects of the community. And it's just, it's great out there, meeting all the neighbors and meeting all the great people of Blaine. I'm new. I'm a fresh face. I could possibly bring new, fresh ideas to the city council. I commend Mr. Swanson. He's given a lot of his self to the city, and I really commend that. I'd like to do the same. I'd like to do the same. 42 years old, young, I can bring some different ideals into the city, and would just like that opportunity.
Thank you for your closing statement. I want to thank you both for coming in today and taking time to share your thoughts and opinions with us and with the viewers. We appreciate you doing that. And I want to remind all of you that you can always head to northmetrotv.com for complete coverage of Local Decision 2016. All the races that we're covering this fall are on there. Just click on the Local Decision tab on the homepage, and we'll follow those races right up to Election Day and then bring you live coverage on Election Night. Here on North Metro TV is the only place you'll be able to find all of your local election results as well as in-depth analysis about them. So for the candidates, Councilmember Dick Swanson and challenger John Wilcox for Blaine City Council Ward 1, I want to thank you for watching. We'll see you next time.